All right, now item 6.2, 9:06 a.m., consideration of update of COVID-19. I apologize, Dr. Pace, this time it's your turn.
No problem. Thank you and good morning, everybody. So we'll be doing the COVID response update here for Lake County, and I'll try to be brief this morning. So we're continuing to see improvements in the case counts and just the general infection rate throughout the county. We are doing well with the vaccine rollout. We now have approximately 30% of the community that is 16 years old and older has gotten at least one dose of the vaccine. So we're almost a third of the eligible, not even eligible people, but the people that could get it eventually are, have at least got the first dose. And we moved into the red tier last week, last Wednesday, and will need to be in the red tier for at least three weeks before we can move to the orange tier, but things are all looking pretty good right now. So maybe we'll have Sarah do the data and then I'll go ahead and dive in a little deeper on some of these things.
Good morning. I have a brief update what we're seeing at the state level and here in Lake County. At the state level, testing continues to decline, but the rate of decline has slowed. On the right, we can see that the testing positivity, the seven-day average at the state level is 1.7%, which is the lowest that it has been since the beginning of the pandemic. And this dropped rapidly over the last couple of months, but is beginning to slow down as well. Over 3.5 million cases have been identified to date in Lake County, and the seven-day average continues to decline, but the rate of change is beginning to slow as well. And over 56,000 people have died of COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. Like Dr. Pace said, been fairly stable the last couple of weeks. So the week of February 28th that we have here in red is, was the week that was our tier determination last week that moved us into the red tier on Wednesday. And this week here, the week of March 7th, is the week that will make up our tier determination today at about noon when it's announced. So we expect to have metrics that keep us solidly within the red tier. And then I'm showing in gray here for the week of March 14th, the week that just finished, we've identified about 29 cases to date. So I would expect for next week as well, when the state runs the metrics, we'll have metrics solidly in the red tier again at about 30 cases per week. And so the official announcement will be later today, but what we expect is based on data from March 7th to the 13th, our daily case rate will be about 6.6 per 100,000 and our testing positivity about 4.2%. And this is the map that describes the tier assignments as of last week. So this map will be updated today, and you can see, at least from last week, nearly 88% of the state's population was living in a county with substantial transmission or in a red tier. Like Dr. Pace said, about 30% of people 16 years of age or older in Lake County are at least partially vaccinated. So to break that down, about 12% of people are partially vaccinated, that's about 6,500 people, and about 18% of people are fully vaccinated, and that's about 9,200 people. These data are from the California Immunization Registry, and like we've discussed previously, that system doesn't talk or integrate with the system through which tribal health administers doses. So if we bring in data that we received, that was shared with us last week that looked at doses administered by tribal health, I think our indicator of vaccination coverage is actually closer to about 33% of the population 16 years of age or older when we bring in the work that tribal health has done to vaccinate people in the county. And wanted to give a quick update on progress by age group. So draw your attention to the yellow column here. 62% of people 75 years of age and older are at least partially vaccinated, and about 57% of people 65 to 74. And then what I've indicated in this column on the right is to show our progress since our last update. So since March 15th, there's been a 13% increase in vaccinating people 75 years of age and older, and 21% increase in people 65 to 74. And what I'll draw your attention to is really this age group, 55 to 64, who in many ways were newly eligible. So a lot of focus, or we can see interest in people 45 to 64, the greatest percent change in vaccines received over the last week among that age group. And then looking at our progress by race, ethnicity, about 20% of white non-Hispanics in the county are at least partially vaccinated, about 19% of Latinos, about 15% of Native Americans, according to the California Immunization Registry data. Again, that is not including doses administered by tribal health, so we know that this number is actually higher based on their work. And then we have a large percentage, a large number of people who identify as multiracial non-Hispanic residents, about 2,400 people have received at least one dose. And we're seeing across counties in California that there is a large number, a larger number of people who identify as multiracial non-Hispanic who've received at least one dose than what the population estimate is. And so this is common across counties, and it's just based off of people, how people are self-identifying when they receive their dose. And then lastly, just want to report an update on progress by the Healthy Places Index. As you may recall, the state has set a goal of focusing on communities with the least healthy community conditions defined by this Healthy Places Index to prioritize vaccines in those communities, either because people are at higher risk for exposure or higher risk for severe illness or death. And in Lake County, in the Healthy Places Index Quartile 1, which is, represents some of the least healthy community conditions, where about 44% of the population lives, about 5,100 people have been at least partially vaccinated. And in Health, in HPI 2, about 10,200 people have been partially, at least partially vaccinated. So still about 33% happening in HPI 1, which is not on par with the population in those communities. So there's still work to be done there, but I think some positive news, I looked over the last two weeks, the percent change since March 8th. So there had, this is showing that there has been a concerted effort and increase in people in these zip codes receiving the vaccine. So we'll continue to track these and report these data, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So a couple of things just to highlight there is our case rate, 6.6 per 100,000, which is in the red tier. It will still be in the red tier even if we get to the 4 million mark of vaccines in the lowest quartile around the state, which is, when that happens, they're going to readjust the threshold between the red tier and the orange tier. So I'm assuming that's going to happen within the next couple of weeks, and very likely we will be in, we will be in that tier for a couple of weeks. So, you know, I still think we're three to four weeks out before thinking about the orange tier, but we didn't see a whole lot of improvement this last week in case rates and positivity. In fact, it sort of regressed a little bit, but we'll see how that goes. So mainly want to talk about the vaccines today. That's the biggest issue at this point. So we're continuing to see good progress, as you can see from the data that Sarah gave. The inventory is quite good now. We are actually seeing a decrease in demand based on our supply. So we're not filling all our appointments right now. And certainly part of that is because we've been having to switch around with the appointment scheduling process, and it's been very confusing to the public. And hopefully, we are going to see some real improvements here in the next week or so. So the third-party agreement contract, or the MOU with the state and the county, has been signed. There was a discussion last week in the board meeting about that, that got signed. And so now that the Blue Shield is supposed to be working with us about setting up a transition plan, and we're hoping to see that within the coming days. This transition to MyTurn, MyTurn is the appointment platform and the data platform. We started using it yesterday. It's been a real struggle to try to get all the pieces in line, but we started yesterday. There's a fair amount of bumps in the road, but we are on it now, and so we should be on it moving forward. So people now scheduling appointments will do it through the MyTurn website or through the MyTurn phone line that they have. And you can get that at myturn.ca.gov, or you can find it on our website. So the appointments have just been a bit of an issue, and we're trying to work on our messaging out to the public so that people are aware on how to do it. If people have feedback on why people are not signing up for the appointments, why, you know, is it because the demand is saturated, which is one possibility? And we're trying now to work with the state to let us loosen up the eligibility criteria so that we can start using, I'm sort of thinking maybe from 50 and above, we might be able to open it up to that, but the state's not letting, the state says we can do it, but the computer won't allow us to do it, so we're trying to work on that. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, we might be able to loosen up the criteria so more people can get vaccinated. But it also seems like some people are just not aware on how to make appointments or where to get vaccine, and so we're trying to work on our messaging campaign around that as well. But at this point, we're doing the press releases, we're trying to do discussions in various ways with the, through Facebook and different things like that. But I think we're going to have to try to reach out more ways to let people know that vaccines are available, if they're eligible, this is how you make appointments, and if you can't make an appointment that way, this is how you can get some help. I think there's also issues with vaccine hesitancy, where people are not wanting to get vaccinated. And certainly, there's going to be a group of people that do not want to get vaccinated no matter what. But there's also folks that maybe with some more information, it would help them go ahead and move forward. I really think, I really want to emphasize that all of our thinking in public health right now is that it's a good thing, there's very few side effects, the more people that get vaccinated, the quicker we're going to get back to normal, and the quicker, the less the variants are going to be able to get a foothold. So on, pretty much across the board right now, we're feeling like vaccines should be gotten as soon as possible, not to wait around. So the site, we've switched now, we're just doing Mondays in Lakeport, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in Clear Lake. This is partly related to the disparity question that Sarah was talking about, and also to demand. It seems like there's more demand at the Clear Lake end of the lake, and that's where some of the, more of the lower quartile zip codes are, and so this is our way to try to address some of that. We are also starting to work with Sutter and Adventist, who've had trouble getting vaccine through their corporate chains, and they are now ready to start vaccinating again, and we're able to share vaccine with them. So Adventist is setting up appointments now, and they have quite a bit of vaccine. So if people want to get an appointment through Adventist, if you're already a patient there, you can do it that way. If you're not a patient but in the community and you're eligible, they are able to vaccinate you as well. So the number to call is 995-4500 for that, 995-4500. And so that's calling Adventist to get an appointment for the vaccine. Sutter is also doing this, and they'll be starting next week to set up a vaccine clinic again, and you can contact Sutter for that. So the pharmacies, Safeway and North Lake Pharmacy are also doing vaccine, and of course, tribal health is doing quite a bit of the vaccination. So we're trying to get it set up in the community to be doing it as well, and maybe once we, since the demand seems to be falling off a little bit, and we've gotten really a third of the adult population has been vaccinated at this point, we're probably going to be moving into a situation where it makes more sense to do most of the vaccination through the clinics and the pharmacies. But for the next month or two, we're going to keep working with the stand-up sites. And to speak to that, the state is sending in a bunch of staff, supposedly about 40 staff today, and we're going to be able to have them for probably two months to help us staff the stand-up site. So we're going to have to coordinate all that, you know, I think they're showing up this morning, so, which is, this is a big deal. We're going to need, we need about that many to staff the site every day, but we've been really struggling with volunteers and with other county staff and with all different folks to really help us do this. And now it looks like the state's sending in this huge team to come in and help us. So during this week, we'll probably be doing the training and kind of getting it set up, and then hopefully next week, we can just keep moving forward with this. So I think the idea right now is we're going to have these stand-up sites for another month or two, and then probably start phasing them out as we start getting the demand really well saturated and we start, you know, and Adventist and Sutter and some of the other sites are really getting the, getting their kind of vaccine efforts ramped up and kind of consistent and sustainable. So again, the appointments are, have been a bit of an issue, and we really apologize for that. I think another week or so, and it should stabilize, but this transition and everything has been a little bit challenging. So the first appointments, if you need a first appointment, you go onto the myturn.ca.gov website and sign up. We have appointments opened up for the rest of this week. We don't have the next week appointments opened up yet. And next week in Lakeport, we're not going to have any first appointments available. We're only going to do second appointments next week on, in Lakeport. But you can get it at Safeway, North Lake Pharmacy, and at Sutter on the Lakeport edge of, edge of the lake here, so. But, and then the second appointments have been a little bit confusing to people. We now have a flyer on the website, the MyTurn, since we've made the transition to MyTurn, the way you made your first appointment is different from your second appointment. So if you, go ahead and try to see if you can work your way through the directions. If you can't, give us a call, and we'll hope you do that. But the second appointments are open for this week, they're not open for next week yet, should be by the end of the day or by tomorrow. So if you're due next week, you can go ahead and get on the link probably by tomorrow morning. So the qualifications, again, we're working on seeing if we can get those expanded. We think we're ready to do that. The state says it's okay to do that, but the MyTurn platform does not let us do that. So we're, we're trying to leverage that door open and get it so that more people can be eligible. So hopefully, that's going to happen in the coming days. Otherwise, everything seems to be going okay with the qualifications. We are still screening out people from out of the county, but otherwise, you know, if you qualify due to employment, or due to age, or due to chronic medical conditions, folks are getting in to do it. The Ethics Committee did meet again last week, and here's their report. "The committee requests data on our progress, vaccinating persons aged 65 to 74 and 75 and older. Depending on the data, the committee intends to consider the barriers impacting these groups and strategize how to address hesitancy." So again, I think that's a little bit of what we were talking about there, thinking about expanding the criteria and also addressing hesitancy. "The committee recommends the public health officer continue to prioritize vaccine for congregant living situations, offering a single-dose vaccine, subject to availability, to inmates and persons residing in homeless shelters." And so we've done that. And so I think that's pretty much it. The conclusions are that, you know, everything's moving forward and in a good way at this point. We, I think we're definitely seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I personally feel like things are going to, that we're moving out of the crisis mode and into a more stable kind of chronic situation now, that we'll, we'll see little pockets of infection and things like that. But the best thing that could happen now is for people, more and more people to get vaccinated so that the vaccine will not have the ability to spread in the community, and the variants will not get a good foothold. And, you know, hopefully, we're going to be seeing more and more opening up in the community. The state is coming out with some specific guidelines about outdoor gatherings and about graduations and about all these kinds of things. So they're, they're all, it's all unfolding pretty quickly now. So I think this summer is going to be a lot better than last summer, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace, for your report, and Sarah as well. Any comments or questions from the board for Dr. Pace? Supervisor Pyska?
I'm really happy to see that we have such high increases in older groups. I know the 75 and older was holding strong at about 50%. So seeing up to 62 is really great, and the 65 and older too. So I, it was great seeing you on Friday at the vaccination clinic. Supervisor Sabatier and I split a shift, and we've got to see how well the team is working there. It's a very well-oiled machine and lots of volunteers, but having 40 staff come from the state is going to be really impactful, and I'm very grateful to hear that news today. So I just want to encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, to just do it. You have to move forward with this as quickly as we can, as efficiently as possible. And so when your time comes, and if you're eligible, just go ahead and do it. Thanks, Dr. Pace.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
No, you answered all my questions I had.
I have a quick question. What stops us from opening it up? What's the repercussions? If we're, if we're getting vaccines and the demand is lower than the vaccine supply that we're receiving, what truly prohibits us, other than a line and a piece of paper that says, "These are the guidelines"? What would occur if we just said, "Well, we're moving on because we're not getting a number of people for the number of vaccines that we have"? What exactly is, does that look like?
Well, right, I think there's a couple of different answers to that question. One is, is, as the, so the quick and dirty answer is, in the past, there's been sort of threats about withholding vaccine, or even, you know, prosecution if people did not adhere to the, to the criteria, to the eligibility criteria. That seems to be sort of not a particular issue right now. The more important issue to me is, you know, we've been working really hard, like Supervisor Pyska said, you know, the older folks now are getting well, you know, the 75 and older, they were, I don't know, 62% of them now are vaccinated, so almost two-thirds of them have gotten at least one dose. That is, that's amazing, you know? That's, that's through the hard work of the senior centers, of social service, of everybody that's helped us reach out to these folks and get them. Because the idea was, we wanted to get the most vulnerable people first, and not necessarily the people that were most savvy on how to get the internet appointments and that, you know, could get in the front of the line. And so that's worked so far. So now what we want to do is make sure that the folks with the chronic medical conditions that want to get vaccinated are able to get in the line, that the folks, the essential workers are getting it. And if they're not getting it, what are the obstacles? Is it because there's problems making appointments? Is it because they don't understand? Is it because they're not aware, they have transportation issues, all these kind of things? So part of my job is to make sure that we've kind of gotten most of those folks in the fold that want to be. And then, but then the third part is really, you know, I've kind of, I sort of feel like we've kind of convinced ourselves that that's been done reasonably well at this point, and we think there's going to be quite a bit more vaccine in the coming weeks. So we're not feeling the same level of, kind of, the spigots not open very well. Now the question is, is, so I want to make sure we had state permission, we got that yesterday, but now the platform, the scheduling platform, won't allow us to do it. And so now this is like a computer glitch at this point, it's not really any of the other things. And so we are actively in conversation with the computer people today to try to open that up. The state now is starting to hint that they're going to go ahead and just, in the next coming, in the next couple of days, open it up much broader, but they haven't come out and said that exactly yet. And if we can figure out how to do this in the computer, then we'll just go ahead and do it today or tomorrow, you know, as soon as we can. So I encourage people, probably what, if it's up to me, probably the next step is going to be 50 and over. Anybody 50 and over would be able to do it, it's a county resident. But we have to be able to incorporate that into the scheduling process.
And I appreciate you reminding me, I've forgotten that you said that it was a computer glitch error of not being able to make those types of appointments, rather than an issue coming straight from the state. So I appreciate you reminding me of that, which is good. And so I will continue to advocate for that change with my CSAT calls with the state, that we have that glitch fixed, because I think it's important, not only for all people who are healthy, 50 and up, but also for our economy's sake, those who are not deemed essential but still need to continue working for them to have that possibility to get vaccination, so they can get back to a little bit more normalcy as well. Right now, they're, they're being prohibited unless they meet specific criterias. And so that's important to me as well, that we start looking at opening it up for that. And that would include a big part of our staff here at the County of Lake as well. Some have been able to get the vaccine, but that's due to meeting a specific criteria, not because of a grand criteria that everybody can fit into. And so I think that's where I would like for us to go eventually, and that looks like that's the case. Schools opened up a lot more as of this week, including some high schools and middle schools. Just wanted to check in, there's nothing other than their own school districts that can take that back, and they're going into purple, won't close them down. I know that I saw that we had a pretty big jump between Friday and Monday in our cases. We had 34 new cases. I was a little nervous about that, if that's a blip, or if that's a continued trend. But as far as the schools reopening, once they're open, they can remain open, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, which is good. And I, do we know where we're at with the 4 million? Like approximately, how many vaccines of those 4 millions have been submitted already? I know we breached the 2 million, which is what made us possible to get into red tier. How close are we to getting to that 4 million, where we would only need, I believe, 5.0 cases per 100,000 in order to hit orange?
Let me check with Sarah, I'm not sure. She dropped off, but maybe she can look it up while we're talking.
Okay, and if not, I'll see if I can look it up later, I just didn't have the time.
It's on the state website, but let me have her look at the questions there.
Okay. Other than that, I do appreciate the works that's, the work that's been happening, the state sending 40 people is, no pun intended, a shot in our arm to be able to make things a little easier for staff that have been working really hard throughout this whole pandemic. So I'm looking forward to that, and I hope that it wasn't a typo, and that it wasn't just four. 40 would be perfect and great, and absolutely make a huge impact to what we're doing. I did have another question, it slipped my mind, but let's go ahead and open it up to the public if there's no other comments.
Yeah, I did. You made me think of something.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hello, Dr. Pace. I just had a question, because you mentioned obstacles of people getting the vaccination, and so I just wanted to, in public forum, kind of discuss, what would people do with no insurance? Many will not even look at the situation, as they're unemployed and obtain no insurance, and so they're reluctant to go to any, you know, care provider and, or even go to the actual sites to get it done, or even try to attempt to do it online. So just, just wanted to see what they can do.
Right, thank you for asking that, that's an excellent question. No insurance is necessary. You get asked if you have insurance, but it's not a barrier at all. So if you don't have insurance, just say no insurance. It's part of the way that they're, I think, setting up billing and potentially doing it at different sites. But there's no, nobody needs to pay for the vaccine and, at any of the sites. So if you're going to one of the pharmacies, they may ask for insurance and they may bill it, but if there's a copay or anything else, nobody should have to pay for the vaccine, and there's no barrier to, if you don't have insurance.
Thank you. I just worry because there's a lot of people that are already, like, already feeling beat down, they don't even want to try, they're just like, "I'll just wait till this all ends." And so that's, that's good news. I hope the people that asked me about this are listening, and I will definitely let people know about that. Thank you.
And Supervisor, there's another thing just to mention about the hesitancy and the obstacles, is that really, I think, what I'm hoping is, once we get the state staff in place and they get stabilized, and so we're running the sites with that staff, then we're going to be able to set up some kind of mobile ability to get out to the hard-to-reach folks, or the homebound folks, or the folks that are in the communities where they just are not able to get in for whatever reason, and we can take the vaccine to them. That's really, that's really the best strategy in our county, to help the folks that, for whatever reason, can't make it in, is to go out to them. But we just haven't had the ability to do that right now.
Excellent, thank you for that, too.
So I did remember my question comment, and my conversation that I had with Supervisor Pyska on Friday while at the vaccine clinic, I thought of something that I'm not hearing about at all. Has, and I don't Has, and I don't think this is an Ethics Committee question, I guess it's more along the lines of outreach and how we're doing that to get people to understand that the vaccine is safe. After millions and millions and millions of people throughout the entire world, especially, let's look at specifically in the United States, what has been approved by the FDA for emergency use, the number of consequence, of negative consequences from taking the vaccine are extremely low. And the efficiency of the protection of the vaccine is well-known as well, it could be as high as in the 90s and some a little bit lower. And so I have not heard a single peep from us communicating with, or Rotary communicating with us. And Rotary is known to be the champion of the polio vaccine, and that's one of their things that they pride themselves on. And Rotarians are very well-respected folks in our community. They, they're business owners, they're, they're educators, they're just, they're, there's a broad spectrum of what they're involved in for them to be well-known in the community. Have we approached our Rotarians to ask them to be a part of our outreach, to talk about the vaccine, to talk about the importance of getting out of this situation, and that our percentage of numbers of, that are hesitant is, is too large, and we need to figure out how to minimize that? Has that approach been taken yet?
You know, this is a really important thread, and no, haven't approached the Rotarians. We have done not a whole lot in terms of outreach for vaccine hesitancy. You know, we've basically been all hands on deck to get vaccine available to people, and hesitancy hadn't been an issue until really, I mean, we had more demand than we had supply, and so we were just trying to get it out as best we could to everybody. Now, it looks like things are shifting a little bit, and I think we are going to need to change our ability. If we had had more people, we certainly would have been working on this more in the coming, in the previous months. But yeah, the Rotary Club, if anybody at the Rotary Club's interested in this topic, they should reach out to me, or if you know somebody to talk with, we can reach out to them. But it's, Hope Rising is helping some of this, the folks, we have a group working with the Latino population and another group working with the Native American population that are trying to address some of these questions. You know, it seems like the vaccine hesitancy question is, is different in different communities. So, you know, when you read things, the communities of color tend to be more reluctant, and, but also the more conservative Republican, I read someplace that Republican men, over 50% of them, said that they will not ever take the vaccine. So, you know, but their reasoning is probably completely different than the urban African-American community. So, you know, it's going to be different ways to address that, and very complex, and we'll, going to be working on that. You know, once we get, I think, once we can get these 40 folks, if they're really coming today and we really get them stood up, then we can start getting staff to be able to focus on some of these other issues that are equally as important and really mean a lot for the long-term health of the community. So, a long answer, sorry, but if, if you have somebody at the Rotary Club, or if somebody wants to contact me, we'd be happy to talk a little about trying to do some of that, because we can use the help.
Okay, I will reach out to the ones that I know and see if we can get that conversation started, so thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair, can I, I did get the answer to your question about the first quartile doses. So last week, I believe it was 2.2 million were, had been completed in the lowest quartile in the state, and now it's 2.9 million. So it's risen by 7 million doses in the last, I'm sorry, .7 million doses, 700,000 doses in the last week. So we have, we're at 2.9 million now, we need to cross 4 million. So probably, you know, 10 more days, something like that, we'll probably be in there. And then they would do probably retroactive one week. We're not, even if we get there, we need to be under six cases per 100,000. So we're at about 6.6 this week. So, you know, we're in the range, but we're not quite there yet. But we should be, they should move these metrics in another two weeks, and then we'll have to be in the orange for two weeks before we can get, actually flip the switch.
Well, the vaccine's helping us get there, so thank you very much for that information. Any further questions before we open it up to the public? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to do a quick introduction to your board of another face in our disaster response, he's here with us today, is Dr. Evan Bloom, so you can see him. Evan has been assisting Dr. Pace in our pandemic response for the last several months, and he will become a face that's known to you, because we have a couple of Tuesdays in April when Dr. Pace will be away, and Dr. Bloom will give you this report. So I am grateful to Dr. Bloom for showing up in the Zoom. He, in addition to his work supporting our effort, he is a emergency room physician at Adventist Health in Clearlake. Thank you, Dr. Bloom.
And he worked the graveyard shift last night, so we're really appreciative he's here today, yeah.
Well, thank you for being here with us, Dr. Bloom, and thank you for your assistance throughout the time here with us during the pandemic, appreciate that. All right. Jake, let's go ahead and check and see if you have a public comment, please raise your hand, the button is at the bottom of your screen, or if you are on your phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand.
It looks like we do have one hand raised, though we have Melissa Fulton here.
Okay, let's go ahead and unmute Melissa Fulton.
Melissa, you should have received a notice to unmute?
Yep, that notice is not coming out, I just did unmute, obviously. And the other thing is that this week, we do not have a gallery of everyone who's on the phone call, I wondered if there was a reason for that.
So we are using the new webinar, Zoom webinar, which allows us to have a higher level of functionality from the host perspective, and making sure that there's no surprises in folks that are unmuted, or folks that show video of things that shouldn't be shown. And since we've opened it up to the public here in the chambers, we thought we would give this a shot, and we have provided a fair warning to the public in the past week or so, that this would be coming up. And we also did a presentation about a month ago about how webinar, Zoom webinar would be.
Right, and we've been putting out all of the notices that come out from the supervisor's office, which of course includes all of Dr. Pace's updates. And I clicked in, as I usually do, and did not realize the change that was taking place. So the reason that I raised my hand is because I am a member of and past president of the Lakeport Rotary Club, and so offline, I will communicate with Dr. Pace and Dr. Bloom, so we can contact all four Rotary Clubs in the county and get them involved, however that moves forward. So I just wanted to let you know, and I certainly want to thank all of you for the information you're sharing. I've already shared with my staff this morning some of the more relevant points, that if we get calls here concerning the vaccines and the testing, that we will be able to answer those. In particular, the fact that the payment issue for getting vaccines. But we are more than happy to continue to push this out to not just our members, but a rather large mailing list that we have, which includes the Clearlake Chamber and all the business associations. So we're, we're happy to be able to do that, and thank you for the information. It's certainly good to hear that this is going the direction it's going. And I know all of us will keep doing the very best we can to make sure it continues in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Again, if you have a public comment on this COVID-19 update, please click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if you're on your phone, dial *9. And it would appear that we have no further public comment. Any final comments from the board before we close this item?
Yeah, one final comment, Dr. Pace, and, you know, once again, I just want to thank all the volunteers, our, you know, our Public Health Department, the nurses, everybody that's been going. I know we got, you know, still a ways to go here, but each and every week, I just think that we need to, you know, which we always do as a board, just commending them for their dedication, their service, we know how hard this is. COVID fatigue is something that everybody's dealing with, but I just wanted to thank you very much for all your efforts throughout this, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your report, and we'll see you next week, and let's hopefully you walk out of your office and see 40 people.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of clarification, the board does not meet next week, so--
Yes, yes.
--we're on holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that reminder.